Less than a minute from the official opening. I'm going to do a quick roll call. See, I see President Nebiker. I know that Counselor Henderson has called in. Gary Zinkin is here. Counselor Welch is up there. Can you hear us, Counselor Welch?
Yes, I can.
Okay. And Counselor Butler, can you hear us, Counselor Butler?
Yes, I can.
And Counselor Sorenson, you can hear us?
Yes.
All right, good. It is 7:00 PM, and I'm calling the last regular meeting for the month of January 2021. I can't believe it, we're already in 2021 to order. And I have determined that we have a quorum. So at this time, what we're going to do is we're going to pledge allegiance, and then we'll have the community invocation, and Pastor Hughes will do that. So please stand wherever you are, face the flag wherever you are, and join me in honoring our national symbol of the banner. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
May I pray with me? Father in heaven, thank you so much, Lord, for just this evening to come together to discuss important matters for our city. I pray that you would just bless this place that we love to live, Lord, this place that's been just a wonderful place to live for so long, Lord, and as it grows, I pray, Father, it continue to do that, Lord. I pray that you would just bless the city planners as they watch the expanding city. I pray that they would have wisdom on decisions for infrastructure, and for police, and for fire, and safety, and all the different departments, Lord, that you'd give each department, Lord, what they need to operate and to be effective, Lord. I pray, Father, that you would just protect our citizens and give us grace, Lord, as we just look forward to what you have in store for us in the city of Emmett. We love you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Boy, did we need that prayer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike.
At this time, the agenda has been sent out, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as distributed for our procedural document.
Mayor, President Nebiker.
Yes, President Nebiker.
I just had a couple of corrections I think I found in there on the second page. When it talked about the ordinances, from the first page to the second page, it talks about ordinances, 2020-14, in the minutes it talks that there is six yeas and one no. That we only had six yeas.
Yeas?
Yes.
Okay.
And that happened for also ordinance.
What was that pen and ink correction?
And it also happened for second page, 2021, 01, had a six yeas, one no. And then also when accepted the reading of that same ordinance, it had the same thing, six yeas and one no.
Okay, so we'll make it nays. Good eye, thanks. Any other corrections? All right, is there a motion to approve as amended?
Mayor, President Nebiker, I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. The main motion has been made by President Nebiker to approve the agenda as amended. And it's been seconded by Counselor Zinkin. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Are there any abstentions? There are none. Chair rules, motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, this is Jake Sweeten.
Yes.
Yeah, I can't hear you very well. I'm not sure if it's your mic or if it's just me.
Can you hear me now?
That's much better.
All right, thanks. I was sticking straight up instead of in my face, so. I need to remember, I need to remember to pull this thing down. And it's Zinkin's duty from now on to remind me.
This is my last time for being here.
Well, it doesn't matter, you can do it from afar.
Got it.
Yeah, just put it down.
Got it.
Thanks. Geez, seems like you'd help senior citizens once.
Wait a minute, I'm there too.
Oh. So at this time, are there any declarations of conflict interest? We do have some bartender permits. There's a Molly Bemis. Isn't that interesting? Because I think there was a pioneer by the name of Polly Bemis who was of Chinese descent. But this is Molly Bemis, probably no relation. Anyway, hearing none. Are there any declarations of council members who discussed maybe the approval of permits outside of the, outside of the council chambers or something? Hearing none. All right. Going on to elected officials. Any, anything from the city council or announcements for the good of the order? Hearing none. Let's go to the consent agenda. We've already talked about the approval of the minutes, and we've modified those, the approval of the accounts payable, and the approval of the permits for Molly and Megan, Molly Marie Bemis and Megan either Lee or Leah. Either way, it's spelled L-E-A. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified, or as amended with the minutes. Yes.
Counselor Henderson.
All right, Counselor.
I make a motion that we, that we accept the consent agenda that had been modified.
Okay, the amendment of the minutes?
Amended.
Okay.
Amended minutes, yes.
All right. The main motion is to approve the consent agenda as amended with regard to minutes for the 12th of January. Is there a second?
A second.
And it's been seconded by Counselor Zinkin. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Hearing none. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none. Chair rules, the motion passes unanimously. The consent agenda is approved. The first matter has to do with the homeowner's exemption, deadline change. Holly Ann Strang, GEM County Assessor, has some information for us. Am I allowed to keep this?
You are.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I come to you with lots of information, as I always do. So Lyleen, I believe, emailed something out this evening. It's what Councilman Zinkin and the mayor have received and the other members in the audience. In 2020, the legislative, in the 2020 legislative session, there was a bill that passed fairly easily. It's a bill that, or it's something that the Realtors have been wanting to pass for about 12 years. They've been pushing for it, and it's never gotten any traction because the different taxing districts opposed it greatly. And so this year, because of all of the other bills that were presented having to do with taxes and such, this one pretty much breezed through. There was one comment, one written comment against it, but there was no testifying against it, and so it went into effect. It actually started January 1st, so they did delay it for six months so that it does not affect our current budget, but it will affect our future budget year, so starting this coming fall and in June for the school district. It will affect all of the taxing districts statewide. What has happened is the homeowner's exemption has always had a deadline that it had to be applied for by April 15th. That allowed us to get the exemptions in place before the values were set so that when we presented the budget, the levy totals and all of that, the assessed value that the budgets could be made upon, that was all in place. They have taken the, that law and deleted the deadline. And so there is currently no deadline for this exemption. We have gotten very little guidance from the State Tax Commission. The State Tax Commission, it seems like they got their feelings hurt with the Red Tape Reduction Act, and so they are kind of putting their heels in the dirt and saying that they don't want to make any rules on anything that legislation has any laws. And so we're getting very little guidance from them. What we have heard from the State Tax Commission is that we cannot roll on and roll off the exemption, and I'll get to what that means in a minute, and we also cannot prorate the exemption. So basically, what that means to the taxing districts is that if somebody comes in, if a house is not owner occupied, or the owner did not sign up for the exemption, then it's being taxed at the full value. If he, if they sell it, or they come in, if they don't sell it and they come in and sign up for that exemption, then we have to put that exemption on for the full year, no matter when they come and sign up for it.
There's a look back.
There's a look back. So if they come in December 28th and sign up for the exemption, that exemption goes back to January 1st of that year. We have the ability up through the Fourth Monday in June to go to the commissioners and get the value change through the Board of Equalization process, but anything that happens after that Fourth Monday in June will, will ultimately be a tax cancellation that the Board of Commissioners will put into effect, and that will affect every taxing district that that house is serviced by. There's very, there's really no ability to predict what this is going to do because it has to do with the market, has to do with the houses being built, it has to do with if, if a lot of the Emmett houses are becoming rentals and then they sell if the market changes, which is what we saw after 2008, 2009, then that goes into effect. And so there's no way to be predictive about this. So because of that, I went backwards and to give us some idea of what those numbers have looked like over the last five years. We, what, I want to touch one other thing first. So the other direction from the State Tax Commission is that it can't be rolled on and rolled off. So if a property has the homeowner's exemption currently and it sells to someone who doesn't move in, we do not have the ability to then take the homeowners off and charge the new owners a higher, the higher tax rate. So it's really, it's really binding in both ways, according to the State Tax Commission. So what I have done is I took the properties over the last five years, not counting 2020 because I actually started this before the 2020 levies were set. I started doing the research on this, and this actually took me about three weeks of work time to figure out because it was not an easy number to come up with. But I took 2015 through 2019. I took all of the homes that were, where the people signed up for the homeowner's exemption after April 15th, where it didn't have it on that home already. And so those are the ones that would be affected by this. Now, it's, some of them won't be because some of them signed up between, between April 15th and the Fourth Monday in June, but I didn't do those figures. So this is anything that wouldn't have been caught for April 15th, so it won't be quite as bad as it could be. But I took all of those and then I multiplied them by each taxing district's levy. And so you can see the city of Emmett is the top row in the fourth column, and you can see 2015 through 2019. This is actual money, this is not value. These are actual tax dollars that you would have not received, that you used in your budgets, that you were expecting in your budgets, but would have been canceled those years had this been in effect. And so you can see that it goes everywhere from just over $9,000 to just under $30,000, depending on the year, depending on the market. And so that's, that's a huge number. I mean, the $30,000 is a huge number, we know that. I don't know, I believe that there's still time for corrective legislation this year, but it's going to take more than just the county assessors to get that done. We've got other fish to fry, and this is important to us, but it's going to take the taxing districts, going to their lobbyists, going to their representatives, and really sharing how this could affect their taxing districts. We believe that it would be fair to roll on and roll off, and it would also be fair to prorate. There's questions now about if the person buying the property gets credit in escrow for the seller's taxes. Who gets that money? Does the buyer actually profit from that? And we just don't really have those answers. We're not sure how that's, and, and we don't have to have those answers. That's between the title company and the buyer and seller, but there's some, some really open-ended questions that this legislation has left, so.
So as I understand it, there were no administrative rules that were generated based upon this law?
Mayor, that is correct. And Mayor, we as assessors asked for those rules, and we were denied them. I would stand for any questions.
Are you excited about the new law, laws that are proposed with regard to ad valorem taxation?
Excitement isn't quite the word I would use.
Because it's a train wreck, and it's coming
Mayor, I can't hear you.
To a town near you.
You don't want to, Mrs. Henderson.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Holly? Because she's usually not the bearer of bad news, but of course, this year she is. But she's, she's the messenger, so she's okay.
You can shoot me, I'd be okay. Put me out of my misery.
She wants to be shot, so.
Mayor, President Nebiker? Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
So Holly, you said this has already taken place already, is that correct?
The law is in effect. It was signed last year. It was retro, or it was postdated to start Jan, this, this calendar year. So as of right now, there is no deadline on homeowner's exemptions. And one thing that I didn't cover, Mayor and President Nebiker, the law actually took out the words that you had to be living in the house as of January 1st. So there's some concern that people could come back two to three years later and say that they've been living there for this long, they want the homeowner's exemption to go back from the date that they moved in. I think that that probably, if it doesn't get rewritten or we don't get administrative rules, I think that that will be something that's decided in court, and I will do everything in my power to make sure that's not a GEM County Court that decides that.
So there is still some legislation that we could pass this year, or they could pass that could reverse this, is that correct?
I, I mean, there's a lot of things that could be done this legislative year. I doubt very much that it will be reversed. I think all that we can hope for is to have it, have the, have it added that it's prorated or rolled on and rolled off so that the people who are living in the home and are the owners are the benefit of it and not the people who are possibly renting the home, which I think was probably the intent of the Realtors and the legislators.
Thank you.
But please don't ask me to confirm intent by the legislators.
No, 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 no. Any other questions? Well, Madam Assessor, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Keep up your good work.
Thank you.
Okay, CIP, Mr. Canetl.
Mayor and Council, hopefully you all can see this spreadsheet on your screens, yes?
Yes.
Excellent. So Council, as I lead into this, one of the things that brought us to this point that we're at tonight with this spreadsheet is, as you all know, we're looking at impact fees coming up, but this is kind of a step back before we head down the road of impact fees. And the main reason for that is that once you implement impact fees, any impact fee project that isn't covered 100%, you have to make sure you have the capital improvement funds to be able to carry those impact fee projects forward. Well, we didn't have really a way of tracking financially or allocating funds for CIP's capital improvement projects to, to make that happen. So we sat down as a group and developed a spreadsheet. The spreadsheet is certainly not in stone. This is going to be a living document. But again, we didn't have a mechanism in place to, to track those CIP items, so that's where this was kind of born. So the goal tonight is just to go over the basics of this spreadsheet. We're going to break this up a little bit because spreadsheets get monotonous, and we want to keep attention span sharp, so we're going to do a workshop for the specific CIP projects with the various departments at the next council meeting. So again, this is just the basics of the spreadsheet, and then we'll, we'll stair-step it into the CIPs themselves for the department's next meeting, and then we will move on to the impact fees after that. So to start out, I've tried to keep this visually representative to flow. So as you can see, step one, these are going to be simply excess revenues at the end of the budget year. Disregard the current budget year because we haven't gone through audit yet, and those numbers will change, so don't, don't worry about the red numbers quite yet. But again, we're starting with excess revenues. That could be from extra taxes collected, building permits collected, didn't expend all of the money out of the funds, excess revenue in general is step one. So I'm going to kind of just go through a very simplistic example of how this will flow. So let's just take, for an instance, as an easy round number, $100,000 in excess for that budget year. Typically, historically, what would happen, that $100,000 would simply go into, again, we're, we're looking at general fund, would simply go to the general fund savings account. It would just go to the account, there was no plan or distribution for that, it just goes to the savings account. So we figured a good way to start allocating for capital improvement plans and projects is to take that $100,000, and we drop down to step two. 50% of that still goes to savings, straight to savings, rainy day fund. So again, 100,000, 50% goes to the savings, $50,000. The rest then gets dispersed amongst, as you can see, step three, CIP dispersion for general fund. As you can see, for that particular year, the other 50% gets divided amongst those departments, as you see laid out. And as you can see, over years that go by, we start to build a plan, a funding mechanism for CIPs. This is the framework. I won't get down and dirty with roads and cemetery, those are all separate funds, but they very much function the same way. So if library or roads had an excess revenue, Clint, don't get super excited about this, maybe you had a half a million dollars of excess in roads. You can see the spreadsheet calculates it the very same, half of it goes to roads savings account, the other half goes directly into the roads CIP. Roads doesn't have individual departments like general fund, so it goes, the whole allocation goes to that. Is there any questions so far before we keep going? Perfect. So we've seen how the spreadsheet calculates. Again, we're not going to dive into the, any of the specific projects at this point. This is just the framework to, to carry the financials. Now, you can see that these numbers we have done for the last several years. We had to start somewhere, and we had to have a gauge to figure out where our jump-off point is. So we went back and, again, disregard the current year's numbers, we went back to previous years and plugged in, those are true numbers that were pulled from accounting, and we plugged those in to kind of give us an idea of down the road where those funds would, would end up. So as you can see, if we would have started this five years ago, the police department, the fire department, you can see those respective breakouts of what would have gone to the CIP fund. And back on step two, you would see what would still be going to the rainy day fund. So as far as the, the numbers are dispersed amongst the departments, I'll be honest with you, there's no secret formula for that. We simply followed this percentage breakout, and there's not any other rhyme or reason other than we tried to identify what those departments had as assets for capital improvement, what they were responsible for, and adjusted that accordingly. More than likely, that will change as this thing goes on. Now, some of you might be wondering, are we going to backtrack to start this through these previous years? And the answer is no. We decided as a group that we would start this with this upcoming budget year, as we start our budget talks in February, March time, and we would leave all these funds that has been going into the savings all these years there. So we're starting out with a very healthy rainy day savings fund and working towards, from this budget year forward, in this framework for funding CIPs. I know that was a lot of information. Pretty quickly, I hope this spreadsheet somewhat makes sense and flows. The idea is that this is very transparent, it's very easy to track, and it gives us a longevity of, as you can see, tracking for several years to come. We'll also be able to identify patterns of funding. If the economy starts to go down, or we start seeing a reduction of red years, we'll be able to account for that through this spreadsheet mechanism and have to make adjustments accordingly. Any questions? So again, to recap, any excess funds left at the end of the year go to step one. Step two, 50% to savings, and step three is the final dispersion to what would be informally allocated to CIP projects. And again, next council meeting, we'll have a workshop and have the departments dive into what their respective CIP projects that they've identified and prioritized that would fit into this funding model and be funded through this means.
Thank you. And for the benefit of the council, I hope to have clarification by the next meeting, first meeting in February. You've probably been following the, what's going on in the legislature with regard to how they, they're, frankly, they're messing with our ad valorem formula and system. And there's two reasons. The big driver, frankly, at least if you listen to the folks down in, well, if you listen to certain mayors, it's because they've had an influx of out-of-state folks that are not used to how Idaho does its property taxes. And so as a result, it, there's kind of sticker shock to them when they come to this state. And so they're really complaining, not only to the local authorities, but they're, they're also complaining to their legislators. That coupled with the fact that in about one-third of the counties where this influx is coming, the residential values are outstripping the increase of value in either agriculture or commercial. And so they, they look at this big increase in the valuation of residential property, recognizing that the assessors are required to assess based upon market value. What they don't fully understand is that at best, under the current system, the cities receive a 3% bump, and that was put in in the 1970s when we had the 1% business going on here, similar to California. We get a 3% bump, and the value then added for new construction or any annexed areas from the year before, or when we finally get it. It might have been more than a year, but the, the next time that, that they get it on the rolls and are able to assess it and then get the monies to us. That's been, in the last three years, that's been averaging about $50,000. Under the current system, they're going to have kind of a 3% deal if you've not, you're going to get 3% going to get 3% if you, if you've not increased over 2%. You'll still get your 3% raise, but you don't get the value added from the new construction or the new annexed buildings, uh, property. For those that are over the 2%, you get a maximum 4%. And if you go over that, you can, you can have a, a two-year overage if a majority votes for it. And anything over that requires the two-thirds vote, just like a regular bond election. But in all of this, they are doing away with the foregone system where, let's say for the sake of discussion, it's never happened here, but let's say that, uh, we, we saw that we were going to have a plus year, so we said, well, we only want to have a 2% raise. We're going to keep that 1% in the bank. Several municipalities did just that, particularly in, in Ada County. They would keep 1% or more in the bank. And then the following year, if they wanted to do something, they would, they would, uh, take, take that 1% or 2% that, that was foregone previously. And so instead of having a 3% raise, maybe they'd have a 4% or 5% raise. And they were able to generate substantial funds. Well, there are Ada County legislators that didn't like that scheme. So that is going to go away. What I'm going to get clarity on is whether or not, well, that's going to go away under proposed legislation. We hope this legislation goes away. What I'm going to get clarity on is whether or not they're going to be messing with the capital improvement, uh, system, uh, that, that we, as we start our journey, uh, for, for the impact fees, I should say, uh, for capital improvements, I, I'm going to get clarity on whether or not there are any, uh, plans to do away with that. If there are plans to do away with that, then we may not be having a lot of workshops. We may be trying to figure out how we're going to be able to sustain what we do because we are at the point now where, that we're over the four, we're over the 4% threshold. The, the 3% plus the added value from, uh, new, uh, new construction and new annexations, we, we are, that exceeds what 4% would be. So that means one of two things. You either reduce services or you make, uh, you make cuts in typically personnel, which has the effect of reducing services. So more to come on that. Wish we had some definitive answers, just like, you know, uh, the, the assessor doesn't have an absolute definitive answer on, on how this nonsense for the homeowner's exemption is going to work. And frankly, that's one of the solutions that AIC and other taxing districts have to stabilize the residential assessment and tax problems that are being created simply by the market. One size does not fit all in this state for one-third of the counties that are growing, two-thirds or not. So that's where we're at. More to come and we'll have some more information next time. Thanks.
And council, if you have any questions, feel free and reach out. We'll get those answered and we'll bring them to the, the workshop. And anything else before I sit down? Thank you, council.
All right. The next item on the non-consent agenda is the approval of the Idaho Land and Water Conservation Fund grant application.
Mayor, council, before I ask for the approval or the motion for the approval, I'd like to have Tina Wilson come up and just go over kind of the budget narrative so that kind of everybody fully understands what we are applying for in our, our grant. So I'll give the floor to her for just a second and then I'll follow up.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for letting me visit with you this evening. I just want to briefly review, uh, the grant that, review the information about the grant that, uh, the city is preparing to apply for. We are, um, have put together numbers in order to install a splash pad in the old site of where the old swimming pool was, as well as a restroom. For purposes of this grant, this is from the Idaho Department of Park and Recreation, has a land and water conservation fund. And with this grant, application is due by Friday. And they would review the application, the state would, and make a determination by probably in July. At that time, um, the awards come out and the money is available for funding, uh, at the first of October. And, um, and a construction period would begin at that point in time. Our timeline that we're looking at for purposes of the grant, um, if everything falls into place, if we get the award, then we're looking at a construction time of being able to have a splash pad hopefully installed by the summer of '22. So part of this, um, uh, part of the, uh, parameters of this grant is that it is a, a matching grant. So for every dollar of grant monies that we spend, the, uh, Department of, uh, Park and Recs requires a 50% match. So for every dollar of grant, we match it with a dollar of, of money from the city, so to speak. And I'll get into that in just a minute. Um, our, we can put in the application on Friday. If we get the award, there is still a process of where the city would be offered a contract. At that point in time, that contract would be reviewed by your attorney and it would be the terms of the grant itself. And at that point in time, the city actually could make a decision, no, we don't want to move forward, or yes, we do want to move forward. And so just know that putting in the application now and we are seeking monies that, um, um, we'll talk about the budget in a minute. So understand that just because we put the, uh, application in, we are not obligated for anything. In conversation with the Department of Recs, they really would like everything to be ADA compliant. And that's why in conversation with your public works department, that in this grant application, we're asking for, uh, some new restrooms to go in adjacent to the splash pad. And as part of this grant, um, so we have the splash pad and we have the new restrooms, we also need a sidewalk that would go around the grant, or excuse me, around the splash pad and connect the restroom with the parking lot. So that's what we're asking for in this particular project. So last Friday, uh, we sent you out a, um, the draft, uh, application, and I hope you've had a chance to look for, to it. Today in conversation with the Department of Parks, um, in that conversation, Kathy Muir, who's the program manager, suggested that we, um, add a little bit of monies to it because we know that cost of construction will rise. And so the numbers that are in that draft application are the actual numbers that we received on, um, it, through our, our research as of last Friday. But after speaking to Kathy today, we, I did go through and you should have received by email right before the meeting, a budget narrative. In that budget narrative are the numbers that have that 15% increase. In conversation with Clint, that's about what the rise of construction costs are running between 10 and 15%. And so, um, at this particular point in time, I'm going to go over the, um, the budget narrative in a moment. I want you to know the total cost of the project, which we included the 15%, went up to $440,000, um, $440,000 and $340. So that puts the grant amount at $220,170 with a cash match of $220,170. Now, this is a reimbursement grant, which means that the city spends the money first and then we apply for reimbursement for 50% of what we've spent. And in that particular case, we don't have to spend at all. So if the costs come in less, we don't, we don't have to spend that much money, right? So we'll be, we'll be sure, your public works department is already efficient enough that I'm pretty sure that, um, hopefully depending on cost of materials, that it won't, uh, project won't come in this expensive. As we discussed earlier, when we came in and spoke to you, um, before Christmas, there is a fundraising effort, um, that has been, um, ongoing and we actually have been quite successful. We don't have the $220,000, but we have been very successful. And I'm going to let Clint talk about that a little bit more when he comes up. But just know that if it comes down to the point that, um, for the purposes of the grant application, it just says 50% of the, of the project will come from the grant and 50% will come from the city. And know that if our fundraising efforts are not successful, you don't have to accept the grant and you're not out any money. But if we don't put the application in, we definitely wouldn't get the grant. So that would be our, our goal tonight is to have your approval as a council for us to at least put the application in and seek the money. So if I could go over with you just briefly, the first, uh, several paragraphs of the budget narrative that was emailed to you, kind of breaks it down into what it is that we're doing, what's the size of the splash pad and, um, and how the, uh, numbers are reflected. Were you going to put the picture up? So this, is it this way? That says splash? So there are, um, two pictures. This first picture is, um, like the little umbrella, it, so like right here is a water tower. And this is where, where the water would come out. And then there are some other features with splashes and, and buckets that tip. So when you look at it without the water running, um, it appears something along this way. This is just a conception and, um, it would definitely be, uh, uh, once the grant comes in, then, um, Clint will be able to sit down, um, and, uh, define it specifically for, um, the city of Emmett. This is just a concept. We were able to get a concept without spending any money. If we wanted something more detailed, it would be spending money and, and we don't want to spend money until we get the grant application in. So this would be what it looks like without the water. And then when you turn the water on, you can see that there are splash zones and, uh, two, water to crawl through and like a rain forest here. And the goal would be eventually to, um, have additional picnic tables and, um, awnings over them so that families have a place to be while, um, their, uh, children are at the, um, in, in the splash pad. It would be totally 100% ADA accessible with it being flat. Um, anybody with mobility problems would still be able to utilize, uh, the splash pad. So it truly becomes accessible for all of your residents, um, in the community as well as any of their visitors. So the commercial features, those things that you see sticking up from the ground is what item number one is, the commercial features of the splash pad. So, um, at the time of construction, we're estimating $97,084. And, um, asking that amount for $97,000, Clint's going to be able to look to see when he works with the architect, to know, um, whether we could add to it. So we'll be able to stay within the prospective budget. The splash pad will come with controls. We'll probably get whatever's the latest and greatest that comes. Some of them run on a timer, some are on demand. Um, so, but those, the controls that run the water run $22,208. The mechanical that goes with that, that's like the, the pumps and, um, the circulation system. We chose, uh, the plan that we chose is recirculating water. So it's a better use, uh, it's a little more expensive upfront, but in the long term, it's a better ju, a better, uh, use of your resources, which is your water and your wastewater systems. So it ends, it, the rate of return on, on spending that little bit more upfront is, pays itself out on the other end in being able to conserve your water. You shouldn't have any problem on your maintenance and repair. Um, anticipated is about, it's not, this number's not in here, but it is in other parts of the grant application, about $10,000 a year. And Clint believes that the Parks budget can handle that without any problem. You already have the trained personnel that runs a water system and a wastewater system. So it's not like you're going to have to hire anybody new in order to maintain it. So what we're hoping to is if you're looking at, if you're looking at this, you're actually standing in the parking lot where the, uh, light switch is, can you see, um, the mouse on the bottom part? And you're looking south towards the bound shell would be this way and the east, east bathrooms are over here. We're hoping to put the precast restrooms between the splash pad and the old swimming pool hole and, and, and the tennis courts. So they'll be accessible, not just for the splash pad because there's no fence here. So there's not going to be anything that's going to, uh, block it out, but you'll be able to use the restrooms. And in the particular restroom that we are looking at to acquire through this project has a small room between the two restrooms that can be used to hold the mechanicals. So you'll have a locked door and less chance hopefully of any type of vandalism or damage that might come from somebody who shouldn't be messing with the mechanicals.
So the mechanical, for example, will be on the backside of the restrooms?
Yes.
Now, does that include the pumps? Are the pumps underneath or are the pumps in the, uh, the restroom area?
They're in a vault. The pumps are in a vault, um, in a, in a separate spot. And so the precast restroom, along the lines of what you see when you go to a state park or a city park in some of the cities, it's a building, it comes in on a truck, they take a crane, they take it off the building and they just set it down on the site. City has the capability to do the site preparation for that, just as they would for the splash pad. So that's not an expense to the grant. Once the restroom is in place, you have to connect all of the utilities, water, sewer and electrical. And that cost of that is item number five, which is the $4,830. In order to do the sidewalk, we're looking at a five-foot wide sidewalk, um, that's a linear feet of 584. Now, an ADA sidewalk is a minimum of three feet. You, you have allowed by a five-foot sidewalk to give more than ample room for a mobility challenged person as well as somebody that might be accompanying them to use your sidewalk. And so the cost and estimate for that particular sidewalk is $32,908. So, uh, the companies that we've been speaking to, they've got to ship all of those bits and pieces. And so we're looking and pieces, and so we're looking at an anticipated shipping cost of $6,222. So the last big number on here is the actual cost of installation. And the splash zone people are the ones who will do the installation and guarantee the work. They'll make sure that everything is up and running, all the boxes are checked, before they turn it over to the city for management. That cost of construction, we anticipate to be $194,000. So that's, that's kind of the numbers on the budget, and if anybody had questions on the budget, I would take that. But I still want Clint to talk to you about our fundraising efforts, and who we've spoken to, and who we have money from.
Mayor, President Neveger.
President Neveger?
Yes, Tina, so we're talking about the match, is any of that match available by the labor provided by the city, or does it have to be actually by actual funding?
So there would potentially be an opportunity for in-kind services that the city could provide, forced labor. But until we actually get the grant, we can't have, we don't have any engineered drawings to look at. And so there may be a potential that some of the cement work could be done, at least through the, contracted with the city. To have it cleanly done, remembering that your Public Works Department has already a full schedule, that if we get the grant money for construction, that, that would be what to do, because your Public Works Department is already busy with a lot of other construction projects. But we would have the ability to utilize in-kind, so for instance, the city is not part of this grant, but they're finishing the demolition of the pool and outbuildings, and then the city will be providing the site preparation for where the splash pad will go. We calculate that amount to be worth about $20,000. The reason why it's not in the grant is, is the tracking that's required under the grant administration. And the Public Works Department would frankly like to get it completed before the timeframe of when the grant is awarded, so that they can jump right into the splash pad construction. If we waited for the grant to pay for the, the rest of the demolition and the site preparation, they wouldn't be able to turn any dirt till October 1st, and potentially, it could move your construction timeframe for the splash pad out into the next year, it could be as much as '23. And so when we sat down to discuss the timelines for the grant, Clint calculated that within his, in his, his ability would be to have it ready to roll, the project ready to roll, before the grant is awarded. We don't want to wait for those monies. So the city is contributing to keeping the cost of the project down. We're just not going to wait for a grant award, which could make us go another six months or later to get it completed.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to talk about fundraising?
Sure.
Was there any other questions for Tina?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Henderson.
Yeah.
It's not a question of funding, but I have a question. I see that you've changed your design, and that there is no cherry tree, so to speak.
Yeah, well, so we went into design on that, and they, they said it would cost a little more, so we kind of plugged in what we, what we didn't have to pay for. So as Tina said, you know, as we, as we get into this, and we, we get the grant, and I know that we have monies that we can, we can put towards the design, I just wanted something conceptual, without spending any dollars. So they just didn't have a cherry tree that they could plug into this design.
Okay, well, I like either one. I like the cherry tree better, but this is kind of cute, too.
For sure.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Rosinkin.
On this filtering system, is it going to be a UV or chemicals?
It'll, it's just a filtration system, so what it does is goes through, and it'll be treated with some chemicals, but not a UV. I mean, the, the cost on that is, is pretty substantial, so there'll be a small chemical inducian, induction to that with filter system, so.
One more. On the plumbing, would it be more efficient to, we've already got plumbing out there from the other building, has that all been pulled?
Yes.
Or it, I mean, it's all gone?
Yeah.
There's no hookups there?
Everything from the pool, it was removed. All that is out there now is the service line for sewer and water.
Would it be more efficient to put a building there where the service lines are? Or is it not going to be that much more to move it to next to the tennis courts?
Well, without looking at, at, at an actual engineered set of drawings, and where it would make most sense to stick it, I mean, when we get into design, we would actually work with the engineer and the architect to say, hey, here's where our services are, what would make the most sense. But to run a utility a certain footage in, in the footprint of this, you're going to be digging it all up anyway, so it's probably sixes, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, all right. So to get into, really, the dollars. With this motion, obviously, I'm asking our city to commit to the match. And, and when we first talked about this, it was $300,000, that was for a splash pad. Moving down the road a little bit, obviously, we've added a few components to this, which obviously will make it more user-friendly, ADA-compliant, and, and most importantly, gives us a facility for restrooms that are ADA-compliant, that are, are within the confines of the splash pad, which we know will be a very populated area. Working with our Building Department, obviously, he is our ADA coordinator, and talking about our east side bathrooms, those bathrooms are very old, and really don't meet much of an ADA expectation for a city. So we know that we're probably going to be sticking probably anywhere from 60 to 100,000 into those over the next, who knows when, to, to bring them up to ADA compliance. And Brian's most important words were, we would have to make an ADA sidewalk to get everybody over to there. So it made more sense to move over there. Since we've been talking about this splash pad, we, we were originally about $150,000 that we would have to fundraise, and I'm very excited to let our council mayor know that we have backfilled all of that $150,000 in a very short amount of time. We still have another year.
Wow.
To, to produce the rest of these funds that would be needed. I do want to put out there that, obviously, with our Parks Department needing to upgrade the bathrooms, I feel very confident that we will have the fundraising to backfill all of it, but I also want to say that if we had to pull a little bit of money from the parks, or maybe even savings, it would not be much, but it would be a huge value to have an upgraded ADA bathroom for men and women, to allow us to not have to put that money into the east side bathrooms. So I see several benefits by going after this on a grant, because what it'll allow us to do is pay 50% of something that would normally cost us 100. I hope that makes sense to everyone. So, yeah, so, so the, the information I wanted to give was, we have been able to take care of this 150, and I believe that over the next year, with the growth of this and the distribution of the information, and people start to see that this will come to fruition, I feel very confident with the amazing people and businesses here in our city, that we will be able to take care of all of that. And I'll be hitting up, obviously, everybody that I know, Councilman Rosinkin, and Mayor, and anybody else that has pockets, to make sure that we get that achieved. Might even go after a couple of our department heads. 50 bucks is 50 bucks. Anyhow, does anybody have any questions on the funding for me?
Hearing none, I have a question for Councilor Sweeten. This is simply a grant application, it's not binding on anyone, it's not a formal agreement. Would you agree that a simple voice vote will suffice?
Yeah, a voice vote's fine, no roll call necessary.
Right.
So Mayor, Council, this evening, I'm asking for a motion to approve signing Idaho Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, grant application with the mayor to sign.
All right. Councilor Rosinkin?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the signing of land, Idaho Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Application.
The mayor to sign.
Your sign.
Second.
It's been seconded by?
Second, Councilman Henderson.
Okay, Councilor Henderson has seconded the main motion by Councilor Rosinkin to approve the Idaho Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Application. Mayor to sign. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing none, are there any abstentions? Hearing none, Chair rules, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Next matter, Madam Clerk, is the approval of the fiscal year first quarter financial report.
Boy, tonight's the night for numbers, isn't it? If you look in your package, you see that I'm giving you the report for the first fiscal quarter financial statement. You might ask a question about the first category under general fund, why it shows 50% in, in revenues, and 38% in expenditures, because we should be about 25% in all categories. Well, what that is, is that when we redid the Public Works Building, those grant funds, they crossed years. So some of that, when our audit is done next week, some of that money that you're seeing there will go back to last year's numbers. So that's why it's showing kind of offset at the moment, but that will be corrected. Are there any other questions in any other categories? If you want to take a look at the bottom of the page, under technology, we have a large amount that come in there, and that's for, from a particular process, I don't know what I would call it.
The grant, the broadband grant.
Okay, broadband grant. So that's why that one shows 987%. Right now, we've received about 12% of property taxes, if you want to know about that, and can answer any questions that you have.
Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year first quarter financial report.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Henderson.
I make a motion that we approve fiscal year first quarter financial report.
All right.
For 2021.
All right, is there a second? Councilor Rosinkin seconds. Motion has been made by Councilor Henderson to approve the fiscal year first quarter financial report for 2021, and a second was made by Councilor Rosinkin. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, please signify your response to the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? If you disapprove, hearing none, are there any abstentions? Hearing none. Chair rules, the motion passes unanimously. At this time, we will have the department activity reports. I'm going to ask the department heads to line up in accordance with the list.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
You have my building and zoning report, are there any questions?
Did you learn anything today?
Yes, I did.
What'd you learn?
I learned the path of egress travel.
Oh, good.
Pretty, pretty exciting stuff, let me tell you. It was an overview of plan reviews for commercial construction, for the 2018 codes that we just adopted.
How exciting.
It is, but it was, yeah, it was, yeah, that's all we can say, is excitement.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Okay, you have my report and the actual monthly financial. Is there any questions?
Hearing none.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Christensen.
Mayor and Council, you have a copy of December's report, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Alice Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, do you have any questions?
Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Chiakunka.
Mayor and Council, you have my report, do you have any questions?
Hearing none, thank you. Clint Sevens.
Mayor and Council, you have my report, do you have any questions for me?
Are those safety glasses?
Well, they're actually, no, they're computer glasses, but they probably look like safety glasses. I can't see either way, so.
It's all working out. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Cennell.
Council, any questions?
Mayor, President Upkurt.
Yes.
Mike, I'm just checking, are all of the grant requirements filled now that we've applied for, all those projects done?
Yes, and we've actually received all of the funds from the state on all those grants.
But the projects are all done, too, is that correct? Fiber optic out to the, are the industrial plant?
Correct, hold on just one second. Okay, so I was just advised that we are waiting on a small funds for some PPE from the State Controller's Office that the chief had put in for. As far as all the technology grants that we've done, yes, we've received all those funds back in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have no engineer, we're at the item 10, which traditionally is adjournment. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Henderson, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Councilor Henderson has moved, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
And Councilor Rosinkin has seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.